All right, may I call this meeting to order and ask that we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Kylie, if I can ask you to lead us in the pledge.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could ask you all to remain standing for a moment, we lost one of our longtime community servants this week, Mr. Noel Newman, who was an attorney, he served as town attorney, he served on the RTM, a host of other boards and commissions around town, and was tremendously well-respected by everybody that he came in contact with. Thank you. And I don't see former First Electman Stenick in the room yet, so we will come back to her favorite item. First up then, item four, recognition, Oliver Nurseries for their donation of 50 trees to be planted on public properties around the town of Fairfield in honor of Oliver Nurseries' 50th anniversary and certainly the town's 375th anniversary. Misty, would you like to come up and fill us in a little bit on that or what's going on?[112.56][112.56](Laughter)
Well, on that just give? Okay.
Just explain who we are for the TV audience at home. You can look at us when you do that.
Okay, Misty Byer.
There's a camera over there.
We are so excited that Oliver's Nurseries has decided to plant these 50 trees. It's a huge gift.
Speaking of the mic.
Is this a mic?
Yeah, just speak towards us and everything's okay.
Okay, we are so excited that Oliver's Nursery has given us this gift of 50 trees. And I think if we realize the number of trees that have come down in recent history from the storms and from the floods and all of the other issues that have impacted our trees, to plant the right tree in the right place right now is so essential. And with Oliver's help, we've gone around town and selected a number of sites in public places, and we're looking at the schools right now to get those trees in place. And I've seen some of them, and they are gorgeous. This is a huge gift to the town. And I'd also like to mention that in the spirit of the 375th anniversary, we would also like to see the town get involved and join together to try to get at least 375 trees back on the streets and even in your private homes. So I just can't thank you enough, Scott, because this is a huge gift, and it's a gift that, you know, we're going to start noticing, not just in two and three years, but in 50 years when our kids are running around, or excuse me, our grandchildren and grandchildren's (laugh) those children, that's when you really start appreciating the canopy and the impact of those trees and the significance of this gift. So I mean, I think we need to give them a great big hand.[227.23][227.23](Applause)
Before we're done.
Yes.
You and I with some other folks were at a Saturday morning Arbor Day. Could you tell us a little bit about that and the trees that were planted there?
Well, we didn't, you mean the Arbor Day?
Yeah.
Oh, the Arbor Day, oh, you mean on the Memorial Day, okay. So we were just up in Greenville Till, and that was one of the places Scott's trees went in. And the, there's a historic graveyard up there with, that's right off of Bronson Road. And we just had an Arbor Day celebration, and do you want to bring the flag up? Ken, want to get up here? Our tree warden here? We celebrated Arbor Day, and Fairfield is celebrating its 27th year as being a Tree City, USA. So for the cameras, the other way.
That way?
A little talk is...
Right in the middle, cover those guys up.[291.62][291.62](Laughter)
Hard to argue with that.
So there's another thing to go into this selection as Tree City, USA. One is that Fairfield has put a tremendous amount of energy and effort into tree preservation and tree planting. So there's so many issues that too long to talk about right now. But it was a wonderful celebration with the Daughters of the American Revolution. And they were up there telling stories about things that had happened up there around that graveyard and some of the, and I know you know some more of the details that you'd like to share.
Can we ask Scott to come up and join us a little bit?
Yes, please come up. This is so, this is so amazing what Scott's doing.
Aye.
Yay, Scott!
Officially on behalf of the town of Fairfield, thank you very much for your gift. And can you tell us a little bit about yourself and your program?
Yeah, personally, I'm pretty much Fairfield bred and raised. I've been here my whole life. I bought Oliver's in 1986, started there in 1974, which is 40 years ago, hard to believe. And as we were looking to celebrate our 50th anniversary, I was sort of racking my brain as to what we could do to give back to the community. We've always tried to participate in helping out civic groups and garden clubs and whatever, working with Ken. And with all the trees that have been planted and whatnot, I thought what better gift could we give than 50 trees for one of each of the years that we've been in business here in Fairfield. So we've started that, and hopefully within the next two weeks, we'll be planting a bunch more around the town hall here. And then we're looking at, you know, maybe some of the schools for the balance of them.
They've gone into some parks and some roadside areas close to parks as well. And it's been maples and oaks and elms and...
Yep, a whole variety of different...
So it's been a great, great...
And also just emphasize, it's not 50 trees, it's 50 trees planted.
50 trees planted.
No assembly required after that, you're doing the...
Ken's responsible for keeping them watered.
Okay, good. With all this rain recently, he's been doing a very good job.
Very good.
All right, any comments for my colleagues?
If you don't mind, Misty, thank you very much for your service to our town. And Scott, thank you very, very much on behalf of the town for your generous gift of the 50 trees and the labor that will go involved, that will be involved to get them properly planted. And I'm sure Ken and Mother Nature will take very good care of them. And just thank you very, very much. And now the town knows where to go to buy the other 325 trees.
There you go.
To get the 375, right?
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
I would echo the selectmen's remarks. I was driving down today, down North Benson, and with all the trees in bloom, just admiring the canopy and just how powerful that is and how it defines our community. And I think what you're doing is a tremendous gift that we won't even really know or understand, as Misty said too. And thank you also for your service. I have a question for you, actually. Is there a way, and perhaps this is also for our tree warden, for the community to help at all? I was with First Church, they planted a dogwood last weekend, and our DPW folks said the water is really important. So is there a way for the community to help with that? I know that's a lot of trees to keep track of and keep watered.
Well, I think anybody that's interested in planting, particularly on, you know, the streets, if they reach out to Ken, and, you know, he can make a recommendation based on the location and the size the tree can get, you know, I think you need to get a permit if you're, right, planting on, you know, the town's right-of-way. Certainly in your private residence, you can plant them wherever you want. But I would think contacting Ken would be the best place for somebody to start.
And if it's a private residence, some professional help and advice on the selection...
They can certainly call us, and we'd be happy to come out and advise what might be the right selection.
Okay, very good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
A what?
A pin.
A pin?
And Misty, before you leave, could you please just give some details on how you're going to celebrate your birthday besides here?
Oh, okay, well, let's...[571.12][571.12](Laughter)
All right, thank you again. Moving quickly on, so Misty doesn't have to spend too much of her birthday here. Next up, we have the minutes to consider and act upon, the minutes of the regular meeting of April 1st, 2014. This had been postponed from 4/23/14. I have a motion to accept.
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Okay, good, are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's one. Next up, to consider and act upon the minutes of regular meeting of April 23rd, 2014. I have a motion to accept.
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Any discussion or amendments?
I already have one amendment.
For yours?
And it is for item number eight in the Board of Selectment Appointments, the Gulf Commission. The term there should read 2/14 to 4/19 for Corinne Halliday.
All right, that's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so the minutes, as amended or before, is any further amendments or discussion? All right, ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next up, Board of Selectment Appointments. To hear, consider and act upon the following appointments. To the Burr Gardens Advisory Committee, Tara Burke, Democrat, 321 Mill Hill Road, for a term of 4/13 through 4/16, to fill a vacancy for Catherine Albin, whose term expired. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Is Ms. Burke here?
No, she's not, but I'm here as a representative.
All right, good. Would you mind just coming up to the microphone and introducing yourself, the committee, and telling us a little bit about Ms. Burke?
Hi, Laura Fizano, and I'm chairman of the Burr Garden Advisory Committee. And we've been short one man or one woman for about a couple of years at least. So I was very fortunate to run into Tara. She's dynamic marketing spokesperson, and she is going to do wonders, worlds of wonders for us. Lisa Claire was on our committee, and she had to step down. And Tara is a perfect fit, and then we will have a full table, and we can move forward with our plans in the garden.
Excellent. Now, previously, you had presented kind of an overall plan for us, and we've had some ongoing discussions with the board about what you're doing out here. So I want to thank you for your work in that regard.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments for my colleagues?
No, just thanks for your service and thanks for stepping up and helping out.
You're welcome, absolutely. Tara's fabulous. You're going to want her, but you can't have her, she's mine.[764.72][764.72](Laughter)
All right, thank you. Any further comments from the public? Back to the board, any further comments here? Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Please convey our thanks and appreciation to your new member. Next up, the Forestry Committee to hear an update from the Forestry Committee. Is our birthday girl present? All right.
We'll get everybody up here.
Oh, okay.
But first, I have to apologize, Ken Placco, tree warden with the town. I have to apologize to the Board of Selectmen because by mandate, when this committee was formed six or seven years ago, we were supposed to report to the selectmen every year. I've been remiss in bringing it to your attention, but we have done wonderful things. This group of people, Jeff Stedman, Misty, Sarah, Alyssa, Mary Hoag, who's not here, they've been just dynamic in what they're doing. And they set their goals and sights, and they just go out and run with it, and it's incredible. So I'm very pleased to work with these people, I'm honored. At this point, I'll turn it over to Misty.
Oh, my gosh, and we are honored to work with Ken Placco. And Ken Placco, I know everyone's aware of the fact that Ken Placco is going to be retiring this year, and so, I mean, I don't know what we're going to do without him, but I really want to make sure that this town realizes this is an extremely important position. And we've got to make sure that, you know, we get somebody right on board, and hopefully working with him before, but hopefully, I wish he wasn't leaving. It's going to be really hard to see him go. I'm going to just say a couple of words and then defer to you, Jeff. Is that all right?
No, it's fine.
Because I think this is supposed to be a little bit formal, but I just want to read something quickly about Fairfield community and trees. Fairfield's community forest provides many town-wide neighborhood and personal benefits recognized by town officials, agencies, and citizens. In addition to the scenic value of trees, they provide a number of other natural values, including habitat for songbirds and other wildlife. They absorb pollution, provide cooling shade, and by holding soil in place, they reduce erosion and allow stormwater to filter into the ground. The trees also have substantial economic impacts, as their presence can increase the value of residential and commercial properties. More subtle benefits are also possible, as some research has shown that trees can help reduce stress and increase the sense of well-being in everyday life. One of the focuses the Forestry Committee has always had is to help our community actualize the importance of this resource. In so many ways, the trees impact our well-being, and we have to realize that this is not just a given, that they're going to be out there growing on their own, that we have to manage this resource, that we have to replant when necessary, that we have to make sure that when we replant, that we plant the right tree in the right place. The Forestry Committee's efforts have really been focused on education and outreach. We've done a number of collaborations with the Audubon. We go out with Miley Bull and do seasonal tree walks, and we do something called Roots to Branches. That's a workshop that's once a year for the community to come together, and we do tree planting, and we do tree identification, and we look at things like mulching and pruning and things about tree care that are so important. There's other aspects of the, of the business of managing trees that we've also gotten very involved in. We've become very active with United Illuminating and trying to work with them to understand what they mean by the Enhanced Tree Trimming Project. And we are so grateful to you, Mike, for really standing up and saying, "We don't, just don't want you to march in town and start chopping our trees away." I think you're absolutely right. We've got to slow this thing down until we can understand how to best facilitate this relationship the trees have with the wires. So that's extremely important, and we really appreciate the work that you've done. We've also gotten very involved because of Alyssa in working at trying to look at some of the regulations that have to do with trees. And we've made some recommendations for the town planning and zoning departments, so that we have a little bit better awareness of some of the areas where we need to be concerned when it comes to trees. And so we really appreciate the incredible work that Alyssa and Jeff have done. And I think one of the huge projects that has been completed, and it's been completed because of Ken and Jeff and the rest of the committee, but I'll tell you, Jeff is amazing, is the Community Forest Management Plan, which goes into a comprehensive plan to look at our forest and how we can manage it best. And he's, and we've all been sort of actively talking to other town committees about this plan and why it's important, and I think that would be really good.
If I could.
Yeah.
Several, I'm Jeff Stedman, and I'm the planning consultant to other town agencies in the Forestry Committee. Several years ago, the committee applied for and received a small grant from a program called the America the Beautiful Program, which is a federal program that goes through the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. And the committee has used that grant to prepare, as Misty said, the Community Forest Management Plan. This isn't required in the statutes anywhere. It would be an advisory document. But what the committee went through, over a year process of talking to all of the different town agencies and officials that have some interest or responsibility having to do with public trees, the trees on town properties and the right-of-ways. So in this document, we tried to first of all describe the value of the public trees, which we call the community forest, talk about all of the laws and regulations and agencies that are involved, and the issues that are involved that affect the community forest. And then what we attempted to do, and I think they've done a good job about it, is to propose what we call the Town Vision for Managing the Community Forest. It's basically basic goals. And the two principal goals are public safety, maintaining the trees that overhang the right-of-ways in a way that protects pedestrians and vehicle traffic and utilities. And the second priority goal is for the town to take the lead in doing this, to have an active program, which means really continuing the active program that they've had for a long time. And then there are a number of supporting goals, having to do with protecting the environment, enhancing town recreational areas, preserving and promoting the economic values that trees have for property values, cultural enrichment, environmental stewardship, and encouraging public support and interest. So what we've done is prepared a draft document that's gone to all of the town agencies that I mentioned that we've talked to. They provided comments, and now we're in the process of working on a final draft that we would hope to bring to you for your endorsement. It's not a binding document, but it's more of a statement of town policy that hopefully could be implemented through the ongoing existing programs of town agencies that have something to do with trees. If you, I've got copies for you, if you'd like to see the draft now, and also a small document that we prepared to highlight what we call the Community Forest Vision.
I think that would be great, thank you.
And I have one other thing to say if I could.
You haven't lost your place at the mic.
No, no, I...
I'm sorry, Misty says you did lose your place at the mic.
You're done.
Thanks. The draft plan, this is the, and Mike, you received a copy of that.
Thank you.
Community forum that we had. Also, Misty, I don't think you mentioned the Commemorative Tree Planting Program, where we hope to have residents of the town participate in planting a tree to remember a loved one or a special event.
And the plant a tree program, which is a little different.
Okay.
This is your Fairfield tree plant.
So just to be clear, there are two programs. One's a plant a tree program, and one's a commemorative tree program.
Yeah, and it's a little different in terms of how you give the thought.
Okay, good.
The last thing I'd like to say, and Mike participated, the First Electman participated in the forum that we had at the Audubon Society a month ago. And we were talking a little bit about the utility companies' plans. And so we were hoping that the documents that we've prepared will be further evidence or examples of how important trees are to the culture of Fairfield. And I think that, Mike, that was your comment. So the utility companies certainly should realize that. And then the last thing, you know, and I appreciate very much the opportunity to work for the committee, one of the comments that was made at a presentation at the Audubon Society a month ago had to do with the definition of environmental stewardship, or a steward of the environment. And the fellow from the DEP was making this presentation, gave a definition I thought was very good. It refers to an action or a person who wants to lead more for the future, or does more for the future perhaps than what it does for the present. And I think that would certainly describe the interest of the town's forestry committee. And I thank, thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. You guys have done a phenomenal job. I do want to point out two things. The Greater Bridgeport Regional Council, the six-town group that works typically on a lot of highway funding projects and federal funding, has actually decided to get our tree wardens together. We had the first meeting, and I think, Misty, you sat in because Ken was away for that. And I think that what came out of that was a motion to send a resolution up to our state legislature that the Greater Bridgeport Regional Council group of towns wanted to delay the UI vegetation management program. So we sent that up, and I think that was a good start. We're going to continue that. The group is also, we're also going to get our economic development directors together and start to do a little more coordinated effects there. But Ken, you and Misty were the first to kind of help us get that off the ground, so thank you on that side. And then second, we will have a public hearing here at Fairfield on the UI Vegetation Management Program on May 27th. So there'll be press releases coming out on that, stay tuned. But that's May 27th for the UI Vegetation Management hearing. There have been some recent changes. We had a presentation of that from UI before this board about a month ago. There have been changes to the program recently coming out of Hartford and some recent legislation that has modified it. So we're going to want to hear more about that, and UI has agreed to come and fill us in. So I'd encourage everybody who has an interest in this to attend on that night. And again, stay tuned for press releases, we'll have more going out on that.
And Tomlinson, right? Tomlinson.
Yes, yes, it is Tomlinson. Tomlinson Auditorium will be holding it.
Mike, may I just say one more thing?
Please, go right ahead.
We neglected to mention that there is a state association of tree wardens. All the towns have tree wardens. And this year, we went to the annual meeting, and it was a surprise to Ken, it was a well-kept secret, but this Association of State Tree Wardens honored Ken as the outstanding tree warden in the state of Connecticut. It was a very impressive...[1498.83][1498.83](Applause)
Mr. Placco, congratulations again on both your service to the town and your service to our environment.
Thank you.
Any follow-up comments from my colleagues?
I want to thank the group, it's amazing, the amount of work that has gone into this, and it's, your public face has definitely been more, more active.
Yes.
Sure.
Sarah and Alyssa in the back.
Come on up.
I don't make Mary sorry she missed the meeting.
Right. Sarah Levy and Alyssa Israel.
Yeah, Alyssa, Sarah, why don't you just step up to the mic and give us your name, and so everybody will know who you are.
I'm Sarah Levy. I am the public health educator for the Fairfield Health Department and also a Fairfield resident for 34 years.
And Alyssa?
Alyssa Israel, a beach resident and member of the Forestry Committee for three or four years, I think.
Great.
Well, I, just to continue, I want to thank all of you. And Mr. Stedman, in your comments, you talked about some of the various roles that trees play. And I know just in a neighborhood park nearby, a lot of people come in the summer to that park because of the trees. And people buy their houses on streets that are tree-lined, and people count on the shade for their houses for energy costs. And we rely on so much, so I just, I'm really grateful. I'm incredibly impressed with the professionalism of the presentation here and the kind of effort. And I know from working with Alyssa on the Bike Pedestrian Committee and her efforts there, and Sarah too, how much conversation has gone on. I did have a question actually related to the zoning amendments. If you could just talk a little bit more about that and what the status of, of those are, so that people are aware of.
Go ahead. Well, the committee worked very hard on developing regulations that would strengthen the existing zoning regulations around trees, namely adhering to ANSI standards for tree planting, developing regulations that would require a certain shade canopy for trees. Currently, applicants are allowed to plant trees that don't necessarily have a shade canopy. They can be columnar, where a shade tree is meant to be a shade tree. And so, let's see, so that's for parking lots and...
And also another part of it was for certain site plans, the applicant would be required to identify trees that would be affected by the proposal. So they were fairly simple, I think, and we worked with the tree warden, and we looked at other towns, not just in Connecticut, but in other places that had, were known to have good regulations to protect trees. So that, and we also worked with the TPZ staff, so it wasn't a surprise. And now, I believe in May would be the, a public hearing on these proposed changes.
We're working out the date, I think it's going to be June 24th.
Oh, June, okay.
And we'd be happy to show you the regulations if you'd like to see a copy of them.
So it's still in process?
Yes.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. As a follow-up to that question, which is a great question, my question is, there are some towns across the country that are putting tree planting regulations in place, zoning regulations, building code regulations, different towns call them different things. Do we have any regulations in place that require somebody who's building to plant X number of trees within, you know, certain acreage? Or could you, could you speak about that a bit? Or are there any thoughts on what might make sense potentially as additional legislation to create more trees or to grow more trees as people are building in our town?
Do you want to talk about that, or? We didn't try to be too intrusive on private property and requirements. We were trying, I mean, that's something that we can show you what we've done, and we were thinking more in terms of commercial areas where trees are needed in parking areas, but not, not focusing so much on private, you know, residential properties. But we can provide a copy of what we've done, and then in the public hearing process of the zoning regulations, perhaps we could reconsider or take it a little bit further the next time.
Right. If I might just interject briefly on that, having served on Planning and Zoning Commission in the late 90s... Having served on Planning and Zoning Commission in the late 90s, we would, certainly with respect to parking lots and commercial development, we would specify where trees were planted and what types of trees to kind of help encourage that, so you get away from this, just kind of the tar beach effect of nothing else going on. And then, on a specific, individual residence, it was really hard. On certain residential developments, we were able to have an impact there. If you think of the one up at Burr Street, right by the America Parkway, where they had an established home, and there were a number of specimen tree planting on a location. They were putting up a number of homes, I'm going to say a half dozen homes up in that. And we were able to save a number of the specimen trees by identifying where and what. And so we were able to kind of work with the developer to make sure that it wasn't clear-cut, and there was as much as possible saved within that. That's great. Thank you very much. Yes, there are some towns that are requiring, like if you have to cut down 20 trees to put this building up, that we require you plant 20 trees, or 10 trees, or some formula to replace them elsewhere, things along that line, whether they're, you know, completely applicable to every building lot or not, it may not be the case. But, you know, thank you for thinking of that. And thank you for your service, I mean, to the entire committee for all the work that you've done and all you do to protect our town for the future generations, as you have mentioned, Jeff. And it reminds me of home. My wife is a teacher, a naturalist up at the Audubon. And many of the units that she puts together, that we print and read together, that she delivers to the children at various schools, are on trees, other topics as well. But it's really nice to see that the education of how important trees are to us not just today, but to future generations are being implanted in the children at a younger age now, so that they understand more than I can say I understood when I was eight or 10 years old, so that there's more awareness about, you know, the beauty of trees, but how they protect us and how meaningful they are to many aspects of our town. So I'd like to thank all of you for participating in those efforts as well. And the last comment I would like to make is, there is a lot of work to do with UI. We all know that. There's differences of opinions, but it's one of those things that Fairfield is just going to have to pull together and work with them, obviously, but stand together and stand strong, so that we can protect our trees and our environment today and for future generations. So thank you for that. Appreciate it. Again, thank you. One of the things that is really great to hear as you're stepping through and describing this is how well you're working with other boards and commissions in town, so that that really does, to Mr. Colley's point, really does create a team effect in terms of making sure that everybody's on the same page, everybody has an understanding of what we're trying to do, and kind of has a shared common vision. So thank you all for that. And again, officially on behalf of the town of Fairfield, happy birthday, Misty.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. We all appreciate it.
I'd like to comment on your implanted comment. That was a good one. I liked that. It's true. More ways than one.
All right. Next up, if, and I guess I don't see any sign that Selectman Stanek is here.
Okay.
Former Selectman Stanek. We have item eight, Director of Community and Economic Development, a public hearing on the Neighborhood Assistance Act. Mr. Barnhart, can you step us through this?
Sure. For the record, Mark Barnhart, Director of Community and Economic Development for the town. The town has been a participant in the Neighborhood Assistance Act program for many years now. The program basically allows businesses to claim tax credit against their state corporate tax liability for any cash contributions made to qualifying community programs conducted by either tax exempt or municipal agencies. The programs have to be approved locally, approved by the legislative body first, and then by the RTM. And we have to have a public hearing prior to doing all that, and then that information has to be transmitted to the state by July 1st. In addition to that, the only other obligation of the town is to designate a municipal liaison, which for the past several years has been yours truly. There are no town funds involved in this effort. Basically, it's a way in which to allow businesses to make charitable contributions to many worthwhile local causes, and then get a tax credit against their corporate tax liability at the state level. As I said, one of the requirements is to conduct a public hearing, so with your pleasure, I guess we can open it up for questions or comments from the public.
Okay, so this in essence qualifies as our public hearing?
Yes. It's been noticed as such.
Okay. Very good. So then, with that, any comments from the public?
It's quiet public today.
All right, then. Thank you, thank you for your explanation, and I guess we're free to close the public hearing at this point?
I will note, I guess for the record, I probably should have done that earlier, we have received a total of nine applications, all provided to in your packet. Many of these organizations have applied previously and are familiar with the Neighborhood Assistance Act program. Some have actually received funding through the program in years past, and all seem to meet the basic threshold requirements. So again, with your consideration, I would ask for your approval of those applications submitted.
All right, now, just to be clear, we've got two items on our agenda. One is to act on a resolution that you've submitted, three items. A second is to, that's on program year 40.
Yeah, that's a separate issue.
Okay, with respect to the public hearing, is this still part of the public hearing?
No, this would be item number nine. I'm sorry. Item number nine would be essentially to approve the resolution, which would be to approve the applications received under the Neighborhood Assistance Act program, and to designate myself as the municipal liaison for the town of Fairfield.
Okay, well, let's take these things one at a time, then. Item eight, we've effectively opened, held, and closed the public hearing. So that's done with item eight. We're looking at item number nine, which is the next one on our agenda, also from the Director of the Community, of Community and Economic Development. And item number nine is to hear, consider an act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Director of Community and Economic Development, resolve that the applications received under the Neighborhood Assistance Act are hereby approved, and that the Director of Community and Economic Development is hereby designated as the municipal liaison for the town of Fairfield for this program. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Okay. Now, Mr. Barnhart, you can step us through that.
Okay. We did receive nine applications. All appeared to meet the threshold requirements of the program, and I would ask for your consideration and approval of them pursuant to the resolution. I believe I received a question from Selectman McCarthy-Behi with regard to our prior year's program. And with your permission, I'll just...
Thank you very much.
Finish talking.
Thank you.
This is a summary of the programs that received funding, or a funding commitment, that would be more appropriate, funding commitment this prior year. The amount was, this program for the past several years has been oversubscribed. The state sets an upper limit as to the amount of tax credits available. If they receive more applications than there are tax credits available, they'll reduce the contribution and credit amount accordingly. So that's been the case for the past several years. A contribution commitment doesn't necessarily translate into funding. They have to finalize that funding with the organization. And then, the organization, I mean, the business, rather, has to then take another step to actually get the tax credit, which is to file an application before the end of the end of the calendar year to claim that. So it's a somewhat of a complicated process, but not so complicated on our end. It really entails soliciting applications from organizations that are eligible for participation, having a public hearing, which we just did, approving them at our level, and then submitting them to the state, design a municipal liaison, and submitting them to the state by July 1st.
Just to clarify, if I understand correctly, we basically maxed out on the available funds.
Statewide.
Statewide, last year. And then, in addition to that, going forward this year, we have nine different programs that have applied so far. And this just looks like an excellent program. They basically get funding, and the company's funding it, get additional tax credits for what they're approaching. It seems like it's a win-win for everybody, and a great way to advantage of just a phenomenally generous program from the state.
It's a great way to bring resources into the local community to support many worthwhile programs and causes. Not all, if you'll see, last year, if you match that up to the applications received, not every organization received even a commitment of funding, let alone actual cash contribution. So that's probably going to be the case this year. We have nine applications. It's really incumbent upon them, those organizations, then, to try to find sponsors, businesses that may be interested in contributing to that program, and then may be in need of a tax, or have a desire to apply for a tax credit. But on our end, it's a very minimal amount of effort and work, and it's a good way to bring in additional resources to support many local causes and programs.
Very good. Any questions or comments from the board? Thank you. Mark, thank you very much. This does look like a great program again, so appreciate that very much. A couple of questions. So other organizations have until June 30th to be added to this list, or is this list now finite or finished?
We asked, we actually published a notice and requested that organizations that are interested in participating at our level apply by April 28th.
April 28th.
Right. So we give them a deadline on our end, so that we have time to go through the legislative approval process and get the information to the state.
Okay, so this would be the final list?
This would be the final list.
Okay.
We'd be happy to add any organizations that want to be on our mailing list for future years' considerations. We have a rather robust mailing list, but we're happy to add others that might, they don't necessarily have to be located in Fairfield either. As you can see, there are some organizations that are obviously located outside of Fairfield, but serve Fairfield residents, so we're happy to consider their applications as well.
Okay. And for those organizations that want to learn more about this for future years, where's the best place for them to go to learn about the program and find out what they need to do to be a participant?
Well, they could either call my office, or better yet, access the State Department of Revenue Services website. It's a little buried at the present time, but if they were to Google Neighborhood Assistance Act, Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act, it'll take you right to the webpage or sub-page within the Department of Revenue Services. You can also look under Programs and Neighborhood Assistance Act is one of the drop-down menu choices. And it'll provide a description and all the forms, and it'll also provide this information in terms of the programs that have received funding in years past.
I've been on that site for various reasons. It's a massive site.
It's a lot of stuff there, right.
It's not the most, it's not the easiest site to navigate through if you're looking for one specific thing.
Yeah, it's buried under Programs, Department of Revenue Services Programs, or I find the easy way to do it is CTNAA, and it takes you right to that.
Takes you right there, yeah. Is this something that we could link to, maybe?
I'd be happy to. There's a link on my piece, but I think, and I think in the press release it will, but I'll double-check that and make sure there is a link from our site to theirs.
Beautiful. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Barnhart. And this is a great program, and I am hoping to get added to your mailing list for Fairfield Cares. I actually wondered, in terms of the state, you talked about a pool of money, obviously, that's capped statewide, but it's not limited, if I'm understanding you correctly, to a certain amount per town or per region, so...
No, it is not. No, it is not.
Okay.
What it really requires is that there is a business that steps up and makes a pledge or commitment of dollars for a program. And then the state considers all that and then makes an allocation of credits accordingly based on the interest that they've received. And as we've seen in the past, it's, there's typically been a mismatch in terms of the folks that are looking for credits and the amount of credits that are available, so they adjust it accordingly.
And is it done on a first-come, first-served basis, or how does that work? If your deadlines are July 1st, and they have more people who are interested in the program?
I think what they do is they just make an adjustment all the way across the board. It's an adjustment across the board. There is a two-tiered level, so energy efficiency or conservation improvements are worth, conceivably, on a dollar-for-dollar credit level. Again, if they're oversubscribed, that's reduced somewhat. Most of the other programs fall under the 60%, so you get 60 cents in the dollar if you're the business looking for a tax credit.
Thank you.
It looks like that's the case when you look at the numbers, because they've all been reduced by two similar numbers from what probably were round numbers at one point.
And then, if you look at the NUC sheet that says the actual credit, it's, you know, a percentage of that.
Yeah, yeah.
It's across the board.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Any further discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Mark, thank you.
You're welcome.
Surprised, it looks like you're up for number 10 also.
Funny how that works.
The item number 10, to hear, consider an act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Director of Community and Economic Development, resolve that the program year 40, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, is hereby approved in the amount of $456,968. Further resolve that Michael C. Tetrow, first electman of the town of Fairfield, be and hereby is authorized to execute any and all necessary documents that facilitate the town's participation in said CDBG programs. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second. All right, Mr. Barnhart, if you could step us through this.
The town is a recipient of federal dollars, or has been for many years now, under the Community Development Block Grant program. We are an entitlement community, meaning by virtue of our size and population. We qualify for funding through the Department of Housing and Urban Development under this program without having need to apply competitively through the state process. So we receive an annual allocation, which is subject to a planning process. Every five years, we adopt a consolidated plan, which sets forth the goals and objectives and how we intend to meet those goals and objectives with federal resources. And each year, we have to produce an annual action plan that says how we're going to spend those dollars and what, and how that relates back to the program, the goals and objectives that we set in our five-year plan. We have to comply with the citizen participation plan. We hold, in accordance with that plan, we hold two public hearings during this process, the first of which we held this year on February 25th, the second we held last evening, actually. Again, we're expecting to receive a slight increase over the current year, which is better than the prior year's trends. This, the federal program year runs from October 1st to September 30th. After we approve it at this level, we will then need to prepare an annual action plan as I set forth and provide it to HUD by sometime late this summer, August is usually the timeframe. I think that is all that I need to do in terms of providing a broad overview. I think you'll see the allocation plan that is set forth. We, there are a couple of requirements. There are, one of the benefits of this particular federal program, it provides local communities with a degree of discretion or flexibility in terms of meeting local housing and community development needs. There are certain activities that are ineligible to receive funding, but others, there's broad categories of eligible programs or activities. We are limited to not more than 50% of the grant towards what are called public service activities. Many of those organizations are probably familiar to you. We've provided funding through this program for many years previous to this. We're also limited to general program and administrative support to not more than 20% of the grant. So you'll see the allocation plan that is set forth there, under the Affordable Housing Activities. Those are programs that my office directly administers using federal dollars. The, all these programs generally are proved to be very popular. For example, the Home Ownership Assistance Program, we provide closing costs and down payment assistance to assist low, moderate-income, first-time homebuyers to purchase their first home in Fairfield. Our Single Family Rehab Program provides a no-interest loan, indefinite-term loan, to help finance the cost of a major... provides a no-interest loan, indefinite-term loan, to help finance the cost of major improvements or major repairs to owner-occupied dwelling units in town. It's a good way to maintain the quality of our housing stock and allow particularly elderly folks age gracefully in place and help relieve some of the obligations of maintaining a home. And our Handyman Program also is a popular program particularly among the elderly in terms of providing eight hours of free labor. Basically, we subsidize the cost of labor to make minor repairs or improvements around the house. Major projects along those lines then fall into the rehab program that I just covered. So, I'd be happy to respond. Any questions you have at this time?
That's my mic. Just go ahead. One off the top, I see DPW Sidewalk Improvement, $75,000. Is that kind of part of our sidewalk improvements that we're doing around town? We put approximately $100,000, I think, in non-recurring. Early this year, I think we had $80,000 in DPW budget that was just passed. Is this in addition to that $180,000?
This would be in addition to that, yes, it would. This would provide...
Is there any restrictions on that money, or how do we plan to use that, or how we use it in the past?
Each year, I meet with Public Works Administration, Scott Bartlett, Joe Michelangelo, to review their road paving and street sidewalk priorities throughout town. There are certain census tracts that are eligible for funding under this program. And so, if there are, is a good match between street paving and sidewalk projects that they have in mind that overlap with those CDBG-eligible census tracts, we look to place those within this funding source. Typically, it's not enough to cover the 100% of the cost, but I know that Public Works is very creative in terms of leveraging not only their in-house talent in terms of some of the work that they do themselves, preparatory work, but then we also, if there's a gap, then I think the town funding comes into play too. But we start with their priorities in terms of what they're looking to accomplish and see then if there's a good match between those and projects that might be eligible for this funding.
Okay, excellent. Now, this, we've had this line item in the CDBG for a number of years now.
Probably every year, we provide a small amount of funding for that, yes.
So, I'm just trying to get to, it's not a new funding source?
No, it's not.
It's not a new component of our sidewalk maintenance program? It's an ongoing...
It's an ongoing recurring thing, that we've tried to identify those streets and sidewalks that fall within CDBG-eligible census tracts and allocate federal dollars for that purpose.
Okay. Were we able to use all of those dollars in the past year?
We have, we have used them all every year, yes.
Okay. All right. Sorry, thank you guys.
As a follow-up to the street and sidewalk, you're surprised, I'm sure, that I'm going to ask about streets and sidewalks especially. How does that shake out as a percentage? Does it tend to be that more of that money is spent on streets and sides, than less on sidewalks? And I ask in particular because this year, I think, there's going to be a greater strain on our paving budget for the roads. So, I'm wondering if there's a commitment to a percentage, or does it base, is it based on a conversation that you have with the Public Works Department?
Again, I look for the Public Works Department to identify priorities that they have in-house. They know the condition of streets and sidewalks in town and what are the highest, highest needs and priorities. We have identified a mix of both in our five-year plan, so we're able to have some flexibility to allocate depending on the particular needs that year.
Okay. Well, I'll just chime in, that I really would hate to see the sidewalks get shortchanged just because of other pressures on the budget. I think, you know, it's important that we balance that out, so...
We've, we've done a good job of mixing and matching both. So, this past, well, in the current year, we're funding projects to do street drainage and curbing improvements in the Anniati, upon those streets in that particular area. The year prior, we funded major sidewalk improvements along Black Rock Turnpike and along the park there. So, we kind of flip-flop back and forth between the two.
Thank you. I guess the other question I had had was in terms of how does this list compare to last year's? Who has come off or come on?
That's a good question. And all the public service agencies are the same, have received funding with the exception of the Volunteer Services for the Blind Agency, which ceased to exist as of this year. In fact, we provided a funding commitment to them. They ceased operations during the current funding year and we've already reallocated what was not spent at the time which they stopped operations. They're, basically, their founding members have retired and there was no one to carry the torch after them. So, that organization did not reapply for those reasons. The other projects are, for the most part, all recurring. In years past, we've had applications from organizations such as Sullivan McKinney and Parish Court and the Fairfield Housing Authority. All of those, we're currently funding a project at both Parish Court to replace or upgrade their fire alarm system with CDBG funds. And at Stewart, Sullivan McKinney, we're funding improvements to remove accessibility barriers to folks with disabilities in their parking lots around the building, which is phase two of a project. So, both have received prior-year commitments and did not apply for new funding in this current year's round.
Cool. Thank you.
I will note one minor correction, and I'm very embarrassed to say this, but I noticed as I was reading through this, that there is a, the amount that actually is in the memorandum, the 456, 696, 698...
Yeah.
...is the correct amount. And so, the resolution should reflect that amount. I actually carried the last three digits of the CDBG 13 number from this table that the feds provided. So, the correct amount should be 456,698.
So, what you're saying is we need to amend the resolution?
Yes, the resolution. And to make it work out, the program income amount, rather than change any of the allocations which have already been noted, we would simply increase the program income amount by the corresponding difference to make sure it equals 468, 968, 461, 968, which is the amount that's...
You can fix the spreadsheet to equal the, to equal the correct number.
Correct. Because the program income is really an estimate. And $300 is not a material difference in terms of program amount.
Right. From a standpoint of our board voting, though, we just have to change the resolution.
Yes, we do.
The distribution is backup that supports it, but is not part of the resolution.
And I will revise that going forward so the RTM has correct information. Again, my apologies, that's...
No problem. Just to get that taken care of at the moment, can I have a motion to amend?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right. So, to clarify, we're in the line after reserve, the dollar amount towards the end of the sentence is going to be 456,9698.
Correct.
Correct? Jen, do you have that?
Yes.
All right. Any discussion on that amendment? Any comments from the public on the amendment? The amendment only. Back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And just to note that the resolution as amended is now before us. Barnhart, any other comments or any comments from the board? I have a couple quick ones.
Thanks for the presentation, Mark. Just two quick questions. One's a request. During your presentation, you talked about, you know, some of the requirements, the process, you know, if the public service has to be less than 50%, etc. And I'm sure there's a lot of that language. Could you please forward over to us the requirements that you must adhere to when you are putting the program together?
Yes.
Just the general program requirements on qualifications, the process, and how the numbers need to work out, and what works within the program and what does not fall within the program?
Probably the best way to do that is to give you a copy of our application form that we send out to all our recipient agencies, which includes both eligible and ineligible activities, as well as, you know, the 15%, 20% rule.
Okay. And to that, can you either add or locate above and beyond what is qualified or what might qualify? There is some decision-making that takes place within the government, the administration, to decide who qualifies and who does not qualify. Can you maybe add some language about that, or is that contained within what you just referred to?
Essentially, you know, our job is fairly, is made easy for us this year in that all the agencies that submitted applications received a funding. It may not be exactly what they all anticipated, but typically, we just reduce that based on staying within the allocation plan as a whole.
Right, right.
And actually, this year, because of the fact we had one less agency requesting funding, we were able to actually increase funding across the board to all agencies, which is something helpful.
In the event there were a lot more than you were able to accommodate?
Yeah, there is, there is some information in the application that says kind of how we would prioritize.
How you would do that.
Yes, exactly.
Good. Thank you very much. And the only other question I had specifically was on the multifamily rehab program with $50,000. Can you just talk about that quickly? If it's a multifamily home, does it need to be owner-occupied, or could that be money spent on a home for somebody that lives elsewhere and is a landlord?
It's actually a little bit of a misnomer. We refer to it as a single-family and multifamily rehab program, but actually, the single-family is owner-occupied. It could be duplex with the owner in it. That would fall under our single-family, even though typically it's not, you know, duplex, if it's owner-occupied, would fall in that program. The difference is, non-owner-occupied falls into the multifamily, which is typically investor-owned property.
Right.
This is a way in which we can incentivize private landlords to create deed-restricted rental units in town. And what we do is we provide 100% financing for eligible improvements in exchange for a deed restriction on 51% of the rental units in that structure. So, if it's a two-family, unfortunately, both units would have to be deed-restricted as affordable rental units. And they are restricted for a period of time based on the level of investment we make in the property. The reason we do that is that provides us, obviously, good-quality affordable rental stock and meets the need for affordable rental housing in town. In addition to that, that's reported to the state and counts against our affordable housing inventory.
Okay, so you, you feel that you have good controls over that?
We do have good controls, and we get an annual certification from the tenant indicating the amount that they pay. We only, we only income qualify the tenant based on the time of initial occupancy. So, if they were to, and that's just by virtue of how we administer the program. We don't think it's fair necessarily. If somebody takes a rental unit in town and then by virtue of, you know, their hard work, they eventually earn a little bit more and maybe wouldn't be necessarily income-eligible at the time, we don't think it's right to necessarily cause them to be evicted. So, if the unit turns over, the incoming tenant would then have to meet our income restrictions. It doesn't happen very often, but again, we just think it was a matter of equity. We didn't want to actually force somebody out of their house during that period of time.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any further comments or questions? Any comments from the public? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mark, thank you very much. Great job on putting this together.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on. Next up, item 11. From the Director of Public Works, to hear, consider and act upon a request to remove a street light. Mr. Collins, did you want to take a break for a moment?
No, I'm sorry.
Do you want us to take a break?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
I...
Given, given the time, we'll take a quick five-minute break.
Okay.
Just didn't want you to miss anything. Thank you for the indulgence, everybody, giving us a chance to take a brief five-minute break. We are back in session. The next item up is from, well, I guess Mr. Hurley's not back. Mr. Hurley, just in time, Mr. Hurley. Item 11, Director of Public Works, to hear, consider and act upon a request to remove a street light from 1675 Merwin's Lane, pole number 3359. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Mr. Hurley, can you introduce yourself and give us an update?
Sure. I'm Gil Hurley, the Engineering Manager. And regarding this street light request, typically, we handle them in-house with the Engineering Department. Back in the 70s, though, they were approved by the Board of Selectmen. So, reversing the process, this light was approved by the Board of Selectmen. I don't know, I don't have the exact date, but it, it's way back there. And we had a request by Ann Wackenovich, forgive me if I mispronounce it, to remove the street light. She claims that Mr. Banks, prior to his death, had mentioned that it was really in response to some vandalism that occurred there. And she and, I guess, Mylan Bull from the Connecticut Audubon, the landlord, have a desire to take the light out. So, I just wanted to give the public any chance to, if they were to object, to remove the light, that opportunity. We would, if voted upon, we would contact UI to remove the street light. And we could put up reflectors for safety, you know, if need be, and then move on, move on to other requests.
Could you explain just the ownership situation here? You mentioned Connecticut Audubon is a landlord for this?
Yeah, apparent, I believe the, the, Ann is a resident, but not the property owner. And so, Connecticut Audubon owns the parcels adjoining that, and apparently, I guess, they own the house. And I think there's a, some sort of stable or barn that's there. And so, she has been in contact and has, at least quotes Mylan Bull, that he's agreed to this request.
Do you have anything in writing from the Audubon or from Mylan Bull?
Do not.
So, we're saying all we have is, and not to have any negative connotations, but we basically have a request from a tenant, not the property owner. Does it...
Agreed. What I, let me just check and see. I want to make sure I, if we haven't done so, I can certainly send a letter to the Connecticut Audubon to confirm that. Being honest, I've been really busy and I don't know if that has been done yet or not, but...
Mr. Hurley, I understand that everything you've been going through, I don't mean to...
No, 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 but don't, you know, but it's a...
I'm just trying to document and write in...
It's dotting the i's and crossing the t's, and I have no problem with that. If, if you want, just for the, if you want to do a penning approval, I'm okay with that. And then I'd send a letter out to the Audubon, and if they have no objections, then we can carry that request, if that's okay. If you want to...
I'll leave it to my colleagues' thoughts on that, on that.
Well, I've got a couple of concerns. Number one, what you just mentioned. We don't have any requests by the property owner, so that would be first and foremost. But secondly, even in addition to that, I wouldn't mind a little more information on why somebody wants it removed, other than, I mean, I'm reading this and it just sounds like somebody just doesn't like it. And I don't know whether that's valid or invalid. I'm not, I'm not judging that. I just, I just don't feel like I have enough information. Maybe I need to go drive-by and look at it or learn more about it, but I just don't know if I have enough information to get comfortable, you know, taking action on it.
I, to follow along, I guess, what I would ask is what the history is in terms of how the process works and how frequent it is that someone comes and says, "We'd like a street light removed," because, for example, there's one right outside my bedroom window. And I certainly would love to have it turned off at night, but I, that's part of our street and it's part of the safety of our street.
And I assume we don't install switches like that?
Yeah, right.
No, we have, we have a whole guidelines of, for street light requests and street light removals. In this case, being that she was the only resident, Audubon does own property, but there's no structure, there's no, there's no, you know, any, anything. I have to admit, I was under the impression that she was the owner, and then upon this letter... And then upon this letter, which was after it was put on the agenda, I realized that she's not the owner. So I apologize on that.
Mr. Hurley, if I might, again, picking up on Mr. Kelly's comment. A, a streetlight, or streetlights, or sidewalks are kind of a neighborhood resource or amenity. Do we contact any adjoining property owners to see if they are also in agreement that?
Yes. Yes, we do.
Okay.
This is, this is a rarity, this particular one. If this was a typical, I'll give you an example of on French Street, there was a request. And we polled anybody that could either see the light, if it's a, if it's a request for a streetlight or any removed. And we polled, we polled everybody adjoining property owners and anything. Because this one was just Connecticut Audubon.
In terms of just the residential piece, I would understand that with the smaller lots.
Right, exactly.
My question is, is, given the street itself, have you had a chance to inspect that? Does the street be by turn or slope or anything else? Is a streetlight helpful to traffic at that point?
Right.
Depending on what the homeowner might.
That's what makes these also very difficult. Because it's, I have a light meter to determine whether it's extremely dark. So therefore, the light request for having a streetlight, it's easy. Now, when there's a light there, to imagine the light off, when I really, I can't shut it off, it, it, it makes it a lot harder. And on this particular case, it is on a straightaway. There is a slight crest on, on the roadway. And as I said before, if we were to take the streetlight down, I would put up some sort of reflector just to highlight the crest and the roadway, so that an oncoming car could at least see some sort of light that would be present in replacement of the streetlight. That would.
Okay, when you say reflector, could you describe it a little bit?
Like a delineator, it would be about the size of this podium, but it's a small little post. And then about the size of my hand would be a yellow or a white reflector. So when headlights hit, you could see, you know, a lot of people have them for their driveways, you know, when they line up or the openings.
So basically, it bounces my light back at me?
Right.
What does that tell me?
Well, basically, it would tell you that, you know, it would just highlight the road there. So that where the condition of the, and again, it's a small, it might be a one-foot difference in elevation. You could certainly see other oncoming cars or anything like that. But it would, it would just be something to provide some sort of road safety for, for taking out the light. As I said, this is an unusual thing. That's why I wanted to bring it up. I didn't want to, you know, take it in.
Thank you, Dan. And not to belabor the conversation.
Sure.
Do we want to have the opportunity to drive by it and see what we're talking about? Or do we want?
I would like to, I'll, I'll make a motion, if I can, to delay this item.
Postpone to a date certain?
Postpone. Thank you to a date certain for our next meeting, primarily because I'd also like to hear directly from the Audubon and, and to hear for certain.
Yeah.
All right.
I have no problems with that.
Is there a second for that?
I'll certainly second that.
Okay. So what's before us is motion to postpone. Any discussion on the motion to postpone?
Quickly, yes. I'm, I'm just wondering if, you know, two weeks is enough time for everyone that needs to, you know, learn about this to have that opportunity. So is this urgent?
No.
Is it something that if awaited to the first meeting in June? I'm, I'm just guessing at how much time it might take. Is two weeks enough? Or do we look at the first meeting in June? Or, I'm just throwing it out there.
I would.
Sometimes two weeks go by, goes by pretty fast.
And I would, I would defer to Mr. Hurley. I mean, I think for me, again, my primary question is to hear from the Audubon and specifically from them. So is that enough time?
That, that, for me, the two weeks or the four weeks? There's, there's no rush on it. So I have no problem. I would never want the, the Board of Selectmen, if they were uncomfortable with anything.
So would you be willing to change your motion to the first meeting in June?
If that's more comfortable for folks, that's fine.
It, it kind of feels better.
All right. Are you okay to take a second?
Yes, second.
On that? All right. And then, so any further discussion on the postponement?
It's not actually on the postponement, but since Mr. Hurley's here, I just wondered about costs.
Let's, let's deal with it. I guess we should deal with the postponement first and then perhaps before we leave, before he leaves, even give any questions or?
That's fine. We can discuss it at the next meeting.
Well, I think if there's information we want back, if he has it now, great. If he doesn't, then he can.
Sure.
Yeah.
We can let him know what the questions are. So I guess, do you want to tell him those now, so we can?
Just the question is about the cost. Is there a cost to the town or for taking out the streetlights? Or cost savings for paying less in electricity?
Typically, when we request a streetlight or request to take one down, there is no cost. UI would, would do that. The savings would be approximately, I think it's $120 a year for, for running the streetlight. Being that recently, especially in the train station area, we recently approved five, five of them in the area, which is all warranted. Having this particular one that quote, "wouldn't affect too many people," in this area, it's a very low-volume road as well, was one of the reasons why I think it was brought up. We basically took a neutral stance to it, trying to find out again if there was any public comment on it. And I'll make sure I, I get comment from the Audubon, certainly. But we're, again, it's, it's, there's no cost at all to put in or take out a light from the UI and it'd be a $120 savings a year, so for that.
Thank you. Thanks for that.
All right. Any comments from the public on the postponement and the postponement only? Back to the board, are we ready to vote on the postponement?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Hurley, thank you. And if you could, anything that comes in from Audubon or any information concerning this, if you could just forward it ahead of time, so we have a chance to look at it before the, that meeting, that would be great.
Absolutely. And again, I'll, I'll definitely keep you up to date.
All right. That's item number 11. Item number 12, return engagements from Mr. Hurley, from the Director of Public Works, initiatives of the Board of Finance and RPM. We here consider an act upon the following resolution of Deputy Director of Public Works, resolve that 2013 $275,000 Small Town Economic Assistance Program, also known as STEEP Grant, be and hereby is accepted in order to increase the handicap access at South Benson Marina, Southport Beach, Yacht Yard, and Sasko Beach. And further resolve that Mike, First Selectman Mike Tetro be and hereby is authorized to apply for and execute the grant agreement and accept funds for this project. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
All right, the motion is now before us. Mr. Hurley, fill us in.
Okay. Again, I'm Bill Hurley, Fairfield Engineering Manager. And I'm here to express that Joe Michelangelo, Director of Public Works, and myself support the acceptance of the 2013 STEEP Grant. Over the past four to six years, the town Fairfield has applied for and been awarded the Small Town Economic Assistance Program to increase handicap accessibility or benefit the community via economic impact. In July 2012, the town's application was filed and approved for the following projects. Note that the application was approved prior to Superstorm Sandy.
Which in hindsight was excellent timing. Your pardon, Mr. Hurley, thank you. Didn't install this prior to Sandy.
So in, so the following projects were to increase the accessibility to Henry Moore Fishing Pier and the South Benson Marina picnic area. The Southport Beach was originally to repair and replace the building and provide access to the restroom. Since the town, since then, the town has decided for this portion to break it into two parts. First would be to construct the access to the restroom and then, in the fairly near future, to replace the restroom building. The sidewalk construction would include a heavy-duty access apron for the future construction in mind. The Sasko Beach area, the project will include a sidewalk ramp, ADA compliant, from the parking lot to the newly upgraded ADA restrooms. And then, Yol Yacht Yard was constructing a new ADA-compliant restroom building in, in that location. The existing building's been since demolished. The amount of the STEEP Grant is for $275,000. The town has solicited contract bids for all four projects. The first three were considered very fair bids, just below the engineer's estimates. And if approved, we would proceed with these contracts probably for June construction, assuming the other boards obviously approve it. We included some ad alternate items in those contracts for spending flexibility as well. Right now, though, as I said, they were all favorable and we could probably do the base bids and the ad alternates for those projects. An example of an ad alternate was in the Marina area. Well, not only would we do the concrete walk to get you out to the fishing pier, but in the picnic area, we'd be able to do pavers where it would give the handicap accessibility to eat at the picnic area via the sidewalk. So that's an example of an ad alternate. We didn't want to price ourselves out of the grant if that had come in too expensive. So the fourth bid, though, the one for the Yol Yacht Yard, came in higher than expected and higher than the engineer's estimate. And we'll have to reconfigure that bid and, and rebid the project. The town will put out a new bid to lower pricing by having the DPW perform some of the site work and survey work, such as the sanitary sewer connection. That was part of the bid package. For this one, I can go into a little bit of specifics. Of the lowest bid was $177,000 for the restroom building. And the town is seeking a lower bid within the STEEP Grant limit. Now that we know what the other three are, we can play the subtraction game and come up with a number. I'd rather not publicly disclose that number since the bids, you know, it may or may not affect the bids. But Joe Michelangelo, the DPW Director, is very confident that this can be accomplished and also supports the town approving the STEEP Grant funding. Note that in the STEEP Grant application, there is a small in-kind or local town match to the funding. So by lowering the price, we would perform that work, which would be part of the requirements anyway. And so therefore, we could fit it in so that we don't exceed $275.
So our town match would be the in-kind work that we do as part of the projects?
Right, correct. And so, as I said, DPW would perform that work. Corinne Dyer, the purchasing agent, and Joe Michelangelo have been in contact and been giving updates to Richard Jones of the Connecticut DECD and David Stegard of the Connecticut DEP, the grant administrators for this project. And, and then just a little side note, and keep in mind that these type of projects also help not just the handicap, but obviously the elderly, families, maybe with carriages, and numerous walkers and beachgoers. So again, Engineering and DPW request the town accept the 2013 STEEP Grant for $275,000. And the other key caveat is that we cannot proceed with any construction until the grant contracts are fully executed. On this case, being that, as you noticed, 2013, we're in 2014, there is some sort of time limit involved in these type of projects. We can ask for an extension, but, you know, it's preferred that we move, continue to move along.
I just, if I might, when we put this, this STEEP Grant together, the original proposal was, had one clear objective, which was to increase the access and handicap accessibility or disabled accessibility to our key amenities in town, which are beaches. So you can see that this addresses the South Benson Marina. And I know personally, I've gotten a number of calls about getting better access to the pier for those that are disabled, Southport Beach, Yol Yacht Yard, and Sasko Beach. So we're basically taking all of our beach areas, just about. At the time we put this in, we had plans for Penfield being better handicap accessible, Jennings in the same way. So that the idea was to make sure that, that those in our community that are disabled have access to all the amenities as the rest of our community does. So that was our objective in doing this. And I'm very excited that this both has been accepted by the state. We've gotten the STEEP Grant. So a big thank you to the state for that funding. And I just want to put that in perspective. Back to my colleagues, any further comments, questions? Kristin?
Just to follow up to your comment about the timeline? What is the deadline in terms of?
I'm not, I'm not specific on that. I do know, though, the 2012 STEEP Grant, which does involve sidewalk from Penfield Pavilion to past the Beach Club. We had to ask for an extension on that earlier, earlier this year, or it was late in the fall. So I do know it, it's coming up relatively shortly. These projects, in particular, the three, we, we broke it up, so we, we'll have three different contractors. And they're all relatively small, you know, quick mobilization projects that we're not anticipating. I think the, the deadline, we're giving them is 60 days after the notice to proceed. So being that it wasn't one contractor that won all three, it was three separate ones. 60 days, you know, once we give them the notice to proceed, we expect it to be completed.
But the fact that you have to rebid the fourth piece, that, that, will that impact the timing in terms of?
Um, well, again, if, if, if it's approved here, we, and it goes through the process, then we would, you know, the First Select, we would sign the agreements, the contract would be in place. Then we could release these bids to do the sidewalks.
And only go through with the fourth part if it fit within the overall budget?
Right. And then, and not only that, but the, the fourth part, we have bid that already. There was one contractor, just as extra information, who broke it down. So we know they were not the lowest bid, unfortunately, but they were, they were one of the lower ones. And so they kind of gave us, you know, a breakdown of if we were to split up or if DPW would do this work. So it's given us an idea of how much we can save. And based on that information and Joe and Scott from DPW, information of what they can do, they'll make it a point that they, they fit it in. Again, we, we build that one with ad alternates as well, to make sure that we have that flexibility to do that. The, I think I answered your question, right?
Yes, you did.
Go ahead.
I have another.
Go ahead.
Attachment E talks about the long-term plan. And it says, this project is part of Fairfield's long-term plan to increase handicap access to all its recreational facilities. So two questions with that. One is, when I think about folks with disabilities, I think about our Human Services Commission. Has there been any conversation with them in terms of any of this work? Just to access, or was that a conversation that was with them? Or was that really just something that DPW decided? And then second part, which may tie in, is, are, are, do you have some kind of written document that you all are following? Or just a general overall plan that we want to increase access for our town amenities?
Personally, I have, I don't have that information. Whether Rich White had contacted them or Joe has, I, I don't know. I would have to defer that question to Joe on that. If not, again, it goes with the Planning, Conservation, and Development, the Sidewalk Bike Committee, I mean, all these ones, plans that are in place. Obviously, we're looking at better accessibility for, for all. And that would certainly meet into the, the plan. And anytime that we have, you know, curb cuts, especially in areas that are open to the public or with high public use, those are the ones that we've been tackling. Whether it is an actual formal plan, I, I'd have to defer that to Joe.
Yeah, just to clarify, I haven't, I don't believe there's an actual formal plan. It's not one that I've seen. There's a general guideline as we're, we're taking on projects to increase disabled access in compliance with ADA or to make the town more ADA-friendly, if you will, or compatible, compliant, as we go through and do each of those. So we've tried to include it as a guideline more than what I'm going to call a formal plan in that regard. But I do think that it makes sense to review this with our Social Services Secretary. I believe we did it with Claire Grace back in the day, but it probably, at the time this was being developed, but it probably makes sense to update our new Human and Social Services Director as to what we're doing here, so she's aware of this. Certainly, a number of the disabled advocates in the community are very well aware of this because we've had conversations about that. So we've tried to be very public about that. It is very definitely a guideline. It is very definitely a guideline that we follow to make sure that all of the amenities in our town are available and accessible to all of our residents.
And if I may to follow up, one of the reasons why I asked that question is I have spoken with advocates for those who either live with or just advocate on behalf of those with disabilities. And one of the kind of questions, comments, was about shoreline access, and you may have had this conversation as well, that some of the work that we're doing, like we did at Lake Mohegan, allows people to get all the way to the water to one certain point. But it's difficult for people to be along the water. And I've had people ask if the town could put in some kind of a, I don't want to say boardwalk, but a pathway that would be, you know, more adjacent to the water. And I bring all this up just simply because I know that some of those folks have had conversation with the Human Services Commission, so I, you know, I think it's great.
I think it's, it's, those questions, and I'm sure some of those same advocates are conversations that I've had with folks that have led to this, and that's part of our ongoing consideration, but it's not something that's included in this project. There's some, for lack but better term, technical issues in approaching that. And there are several different techniques for doing that that we're exploring and looking at. But it's, you want to have something that kind of works. And there are a couple of different approaches, one of which I think we're using now in the Jennings Beach area, that doesn't work as effectively as we'd like. We have been exploring what some other towns are doing. Milford is one that I've asked our DPW folks to take a look at and see if we can utilize that approach and technology here. So that's an ongoing objective, but it's not included in the work that we're doing here.
Recreation does have the, I'll call them the temporary boardwalks that you can extend on, but they're mixed results. Sometimes they, they work and other times, whether it be the shifting sand or just, or some, you know, there may be the age of them, if they're warped a little bit, and if, once you start creating lips, then it becomes a negative. So I would say the temporary boardwalks in some places have worked well, but others not so well. So I'd say they have mixed results. And like the first select would said, investigating latest technologies, I guess would be the best word.
And the purpose for me to bring that example up was not necessarily to talk about the merits of that. And I, and I appreciate hearing that there is conversation, but I just want to, I'd probably go back for a minute and thank you and say I'm really glad that we are doing this work to provide added accessibility. Another question, and it may be actually to Mr. Tetra, is about our ADA compliance, or, you know, what kind of plan do we have in terms of not just access to our town facilities, but in terms of what we are required to do for ADA compliance? Do we have some kind of written plan for that as opposed to some goals in terms of increasing?
Yeah, the, the short answer is we're doing everything we're required to do. The practical side is because in so many cases, we have older buildings, we're grandfathered, so we may not be as compliant as we need to be, or whereas we're compliant as we need to be, we're not as compliant as we would like to be to ensure not only full access, but easy access throughout. So this, look at this as kind of step one on the amenities, which were one of the areas that were addressed. I know when we were building Penfield, there were a number of disabled advocates that came forward and said, we need, we want to have, make sure there's access at Penfield. So when we went through the initial construction on that, that was included. We'd had Jennings included. This really expands it. This adds the pier, this adds Sasko, this adds Southport Beach, this adds Yod. All of a sudden, now our coast is handicap accessible. That's a big step forward. Mr. Hurley, again, thank you for delaying this till after Storm Sandy.
Well, and again, just real quick to add on, is, as I said, I know recreation has a plan or a con, certainly a concept plan of all their recreation facilities. I know the DPW, for all the building maintenance people, they have a plan and they have recommendations. And I think a quick peek on some of them with the five-year plan, you know, I've noticed a couple of them are up and coming. I don't know them off the top of my head, but I've seen them there. So there are some plans, but yeah, maybe it'd be nice to put it all in one, you know, package.
I think that the simple answer is we are where we need to be, but that's not where we want to be.
Right. Sure, we strive to improve.
As simple as we can put it.
Yes, exactly.
And you can, there are a lot of improvements we need to get to. So that's why as we do existing projects, as we find funding like this, that perhaps gives us the ability to jump ahead in accessibility in different areas, we'll continue to look for that. This is not the end. This is just one of those steps in the journey.
And then, and we're going back real quick with Mark Barnhart, when he was talking about that component, some of that CBDG money or whatever, the fund, that funding source can also go for that. So on certain years where they didn't have the sidewalk, where there was a more pressing need for town hall, you know, town hall ramp or something like that, that's come into play as well, so.
But, but again, not to understate what we're doing here. This is probably the most aggressive move in terms of adding handicap accessibility that our town has taken on in any one year, any one project. So this is a major step forward in that. It's not, as I said, it's not the end of the journey, but this is a major step forward, a major commitment of funds and resources to get these beaches accessible to everybody in our town, which we talk about being a coastal community, we talk about being a beach community. This makes the beaches accessible. So that's, that's a very important step in that.
Yeah, agreed.
Mr. Kylie, any final questions?
Yes, please. Mr. Hurley, thank you, and thank you to Mr. Michelangelo for your efforts on putting this together. And just quickly, I agree with everything that's been said here, and it's my pleasure to support this motion to increase access to our beaches for our handicapped and our disabled citizens. So thank you.
Thank you.
Are we able to go to the public? Any comments from the public? Saying none, back to the board. Any more discussion or comments from the board? Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Hurley, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, item 13, to consider and approve an abatement of taxes for the 2011 grantless taxes due July 12 to June 13, and the 2012 grantless taxes due July 13 to June 14 for 21 and 63 Durrell Drive in the amount of $16,280 and 20 cents. May I have a motion to accept?
Some of.
A second.
Second.
Cinda, thank you. Could you introduce yourself and then fill us in on what's going on here?
I am Cinda Bookter. I'm the tax collector for the town of Fairfield. I was notified by a property owner that is listed under CAPS property that his mortgage holder was receiving notices of unpaid taxes. I researched this with Mark Burnham, and it appears to be, according to an agreement that was signed by the town in 1995, that these properties are, were developed for low-income housing. And there was an agreement that was made that as long as they qualified for the low-income housing, that the taxes would be abated each year. So because the property owner was not getting a tax bill, and I was unaware of the agreement, the tax bill was going out, once he notified me, I immediately researched it, got the information from Mark, from, and spoke to his mortgage holder, wrote him a letter saying that he is in compliance. Mark assured me that he was in compliance with the agreement and that the taxes, as per the agreement, should be abated by the town and that I would put it on the agenda for this selectment.
And you've attached the agreement here as part of the backlog for this?
Yes.
Okay. Is there, is this for the life of the mortgage, run with the property? Does, at any point, does this tax abatement go away?
My understanding, as long as it falls under the agreement, needed to be affordable housing set forth by the state, that the tax abatement would be made. I have, I've read through the agreement and I find nothing that shows a cutoff date, but they do have to remain compliant with the state levels of affordable housing.
While you're scanning it?
Right ahead.
Has the, has the town attorney had a chance to look at this agreement and concur with your comments?
You know, I, it was not, yeah.
Two answers to that. One is, you can answer it for recently. I think the town attorney, I would expect the town attorney had reviewed this when it was originally signed back in 95.
Correct.
Obviously, I can't guarantee that, but I would expect that happened.
Yes, the town attorney, yes, cited.
But, so your question is, has he reviewed it recently in order to just confirm it compliance?
Right, exactly. And maybe possibly in conjunction with Mr. Barnhart, who would be more apt to be up on the regulations that define what is affordable housing and does this or does this not still qualify?
Correct. So I can relay that to Mr. Bernhardt and Mr. Lesser. I'm following the procedure as a collector, simply just to
Exactly.
Provide the information and request the abatement.
But the taxes have been abated all of these years, each year and every year, until recently. I'm going, I'm going to guess when you took over and
Correct.
Did not know about it, and the bill went out, and that's what brought this to the surface?
Correct. And I went into the, the information in the office, and I found the prior tax collector's request on June 29 of 2011, requesting the amounts to be. And it said, his two properties on Durrell Drive continue to be eligible for abatement from real estate taxes as low-income housing. Therefore, I request that the board abate the 2010 taxes as follows.
Right.
So yes, there is a history of it, and I have found that documentation.
Now, are these rental units?
I was just going to follow up and ask you, did you come across any documentation that laid out a review plan? Does it get reviewed annually, every couple of years? Or what the parameters for somebody looking at it to, to ensure it's in compliance?
No. Apparently, as the tax collector, we refer to, the tax assessor also would be aware of it, but community, the community development. They would be responsible for reviewing it out of their office.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are we aware if these are rental units or not?
They are rental units, yes.
Because I just, I direct my colleagues to paragraph 16 and 17. 16 has a tax phase in for homes where real estate taxes were phased in over about a five-year period, if I'm correct here. And out of the rental units, that looks like, for as long as such rental units are subject to terms and conditions of the declarations, that looks like a lifetime coverage. Any further questions, discussion?
Is there any urgency on this? Could be done by a certain date or time, or do you have a deadline hanging over your head?
I don't believe so. What I would do is I would code the file so no more delinquencies were spent.
Right, oh yeah.
You know, to the, to the bank. There is, as far as, you know, Stanley's request came in on June 29 of 2011, so I'm assuming that we would have until, we can, we can abate at any time, as long as you agree to it. So no, there is absolutely no timeframe on this that I'm aware of.
Would it be prudent to get a review, just to get comfortable, or am I reading it too closely?
I think there are two components of what you asked. One is it, since, Cinda's new, and since we all know it, this was originally signed by Mr. Audley.
Yeah, I saw that.
It probably wouldn't hurt to have the town attorney look at that. But the other question I heard you ask was, is there a kind of an ongoing review to make sure that the properties still meet that criteria, and what's our process for that?
Correct.
I think that's also a very reasonable question to get some feedback on.
Yeah.
Well, and I think that my question earlier about is Mr. Barnhart saying, I'm comfortable with Mr. Barnhart, having been familiar with this process in the past and having gone through it before. But the review question is a good one, just in terms of how, you know, your departments communicate about it. But in terms of the actual agreement, you know, it seems, I trust that Mr. Barnhart followed through on those pieces, but I do, you know, think that if there's no urgency, I don't see a reason why not to wait. As long as, saying that, as long as if for some reason, we were to vote against this, in other words, if somehow we were to say, no, we're not abating this, I wouldn't want to see that person penalized any further in terms of taxes. I'm not suggesting that that, you know, would happen, but I just want to make note of that. I'm anticipating that we are going to be likely voting to abate these taxes. That's what my sense is, but I just do want to note that. I wouldn't want someone to be further.
Yeah, the way this reads, it's actually pretty straightforward in terms of, town has arranged for the rental units to have full tax abatement, for as long as such rental units are subject to the terms and conditions. So I think it's more a process point of getting us all on the same page going forward. By postponing it, that gives us a hook to get the research that we're doing it. Unless for some reason, these are no longer affordable rentals, I think that would be the only question. And if it was, we can probably decide what to do at that point, because then the question would be, when did they stop being affordable and when did anything else comply?
The other question that comes to mind is, and I'm sure that this was done with the greatest of intentions, and I'm sure it's a fine agreement and all that, I wonder, do we have a, a central location where there might be other agreements like this? Are there a lot of agreements like this, or are there, is it a couple of one-offs? Or do we, do you know what I'm asking?
I know exactly what you're asking. And the reason that I was caught completely unaware of this, there are properties that fall under the housing authority that are not taxed, and they are not, they don't generate a tax bill because they're exempt in the assessor's office. This is actually the first kind of agreement that I have seen like this. So this, these are different in some aspect than the others.
The other thing we should probably point out is not only Cinda knew, so is our tax collection software.
That's correct.
So there's to some degree some question of what intelligence or data was passed with the system update, yeah, upgrade in that.
Well, but these are not coded to be exempt because the abatements go back all the way from this agreement.
Right.
So there's a reason that our assessor is not coding them, and that I haven't talked to him about. But that's also a conversation that might take place, because this is, I questioned the same thing, Mr. Tetra, is why it was coming through on the software if it, it is a tax exempt property.
And to some degree, it, again, I think that gets back to the follow-up process, what's your review? And, you know, how do you make sure it's coded, but potentially not for life, if there's a certain criteria it has to maintain?
Well, I, when I read the, read it initially, that was my first reaction, that if for some reason this did not fall into the guidelines, someone else purchased it, or some scenario set it so that it was not affordable housing, that the town would immediately be able to start taxing it. And that could have been one of the reasons for the agreement that was made.
Could be, okay. And that, that might be a good, you know, kind of getting the full picture from our town attorney as to how that works. Again, I think that's
He might have some other documentation that goes with this.
All right, so somewhere on the table, do we have a motion to postpone? So, go ahead.
I just, I just want to note, in Mr. Barnhart's memo, it says, this will certify that the units in question remain subject to the terms and conditions, and that the property owner is in compliance with his obligations, which I read. And perhaps, Ms. Bookter, you can confirm that this remains affordable housing, which is
Right, I did go to, to his office and speak to him about this and ask him to come to my, to, to let me know whether this agreement was still in place and whether it was still appropriate to request for an abatement. And he did confirm that. But he didn't give me any documentation as to what he did in order to confirm it. But we certainly can ask him.
Okay, I think it just, unless somebody has an issue, I think Mr. Kylie's suggestion of just, timing wise, if we're going to have a motion to postpone, next month, first meeting in June?
Is there, is it too soon to do it, the first, the next meeting? I'm just thinking we postpone something else to the first meeting in June.
Couple of weeks or so, or the four weeks?
It depends on, we want Mr. Lesser to review it and see if he can find additional documentation on it. I'm not sure what his timeframe I'm not sure what his timeframe is. I think Mr. Barnhart, you know, it will be a, it will be a simple discussion, and we can bring the assessor into it.
Why don't we try two weeks, and if it's not ready, then we'll postpone it again. Makes sense. All right, so do you want to make the motion?
Yeah, I move to postpone item 13 to our next regular meeting.
A second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Any discussion from the public? Back to the board. Sorry. Now I know how CNN feels, or C-SPAN, rather. Back to the board, are we ready to vote on the postponement?
Yes.
All in favor? Aye. Cinda, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for bringing us to our attention and stepping us through this.
Thank you.
And for waiting, you've done a lot of waiting at meetings this week, so
That's okay.
Thank you for being here.
You're very welcome.
You're welcome.
And if, before I go, you don't have any questions on refunds?
Well, since you're here, you
I think we're good. I think the process we set up for this seems to be working very well.
Yes.
Good, very good. All right, thank you.
All right, next up, to consider and act upon tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector, and the amount recommended, may I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have an amendment. If we may add at the end of the sentence, the amount $10,653.55.
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment?
No.
Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
The motion, as amended, stands before us. Are we ready to vote on the motion?
Yes.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. To here, consider, to here, consider and act on any communications, there's nothing to act on, but this came across my desk, and we get these from time to time, but it was so timely, I thought that we would, I would take a moment and just read this to everyone. This is from, a press release from our fire department. Fairfield Fire extricated driver from I-95, exit 22, motor vehicle accident. We've just had a number of these recently, and I just wanted to let folks know that the extent that our fire department takes responsibility for, acts quickly, and keeps our highways safe. On Wednesday morning, 11:09, the Fairfield Emergency Communication Center received multiple calls reporting a vehicle off the highway and down the embankment between exit 22 and 21 on I-95 southbound. Fairfield Fire Department Engine 2, Ladder 1, Ladder 2, and Car 3 responded with Engine 1, Engine 4, and Bridgeport Ladder 11 added to the assignment en route. Car 3 arrived on the scene and confirmed an SUV down the embankment with a driver trapped in the vehicle. Assistant Chief George Gamola assumed command of the incident. Fire personnel stabilized the vehicle, which had lodged against a tree, gaining access to the driver by using hydraulic tools to open its doors and remove the roof before placing the patient on a longboard for transfer to the waiting AMR ambulance and transport to Bridgeport Hospital. Ladder 2 was extended to the damaged exit sign, which had been struck, causing one of the two supporting steel I-beams to become completely detached, and secured the large metal sign from falling onto emergency personnel and the patient below. Fire Chief Richard Felner was on scene, supporting as a liaison with the state police. Fairfield Police arrived on the scene shortly before the Fairfield Fire, and American Medical Response, AMR, the ambulance company, arrived shortly after the fire department, with state DOT representatives on scene shortly before noon. The fire department cleared the scene shortly after noon, with Connecticut State Police remaining on the scene to complete the investigation. I just thought that was an excellent example to share of how our fire department responds in such a situation, how many resources it brought to bear, how quickly, in this case, to address somebody who was involved in a very serious accident, had to be extricated from the car and transported to Bridgeport Hospital, how it showed our Bridgeport, our Fairfield Fire, Fairfield Police, AMR, and state police all working together to get the job done. So I thought I'd lay, I know you were copied on the email of this earlier today, but it seemed appropriate to repeat.
Absolutely. It was, it was a great job. And the pictures the Chief Felner sent over were just amazing, scene pictures of what they were doing and how they were safeguarding the situation. It was, it was very impressive.
All right, then, moving on to item 16, to here, consider and act upon any other business that shall properly come before this meeting, having none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.